Say the pledge.
Pledge and reasons of the United States of America and to the good public for which this ends.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And Sarah will not be joining us this evening, but we still have a quorum. Brent, there was a change on the agenda.
Actually, it's.
It's not? Okay, just double checking.
Yes, I would like, I would like to add an agenda item tonight. I would like to add dust control on Wall Avenue. Don't know where you want it on the agenda.
Sorry, we did talk about that, so.
Um, all right, let's um. Let's put that one at the top, then let's put that seven, seven point five.
Okay. And I would like to also add something to the agenda. Um, I had asked for a discussion with council on how we wanted to proceed with um. Getting things put on the agenda and not on the agenda, I guess, so.
Those are important to happen.
Admin updates, if that's what you want to do, that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, do that then, thank you.
Wasn't ignored, it was just on there.
Okay.
Right, anything else on the agenda?
No, I will make a motion to approve the regular agenda with the addition of the dust control for seven point, seven point five.
Yep, okay, you want me to make some motion, can I get a second?
Second.
If he has a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Great, motion carries, consent agenda, any last minute changes there, Jim or? Yeah. All right, any questions on that, or I'll look for a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, Stephanie makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, any changes to the uh, or additions to the meeting minutes from the last meeting?
I, I do have one question on it, and maybe I'm misremembering. But I was thinking that we removed item. Under the consent agenda, item number four F. The Chestnut and Ironwood discussion, I was thinking, I thought we had removed that.
That was replaced.
And replaced with sewer improvement district twenty twenty one for lift station or something? I'm just wondering if that needs to be reflected in the minutes?
Yeah, it basically swapped out that place. They kept F, but.
But, but we didn't talk about, there were no documents about Chestnut and Ironwood, so what was uh, what was it then?
What was it supposed to be?
Yeah, or I mean, should, should it be on there since we didn't, since we didn't do anything, we didn't approve anything in the consent agenda on it? Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Remove that.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm gonna look for a motion to accept what said change.
Get the motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Can we does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries, okay, anybody got anything you want to bring up tonight, public comment time? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll move along to the sheriff's updates.
Bringing down Bismarck, getting vision zero award today, so that's why you're not here.
Cool.
Training with rigs all day and now I'm here, so.
Yeah, there you go.
Sweating, so. Um. Getting, getting busy, I mean, it's, it's already summer's in full swing for us, I mean, we're gonna be running, running crazy and running short. Could be a lot of people down in training and stuff during the summertime, so. It's, we're already seeing it like, oh, we got two people for the whole shift right now, and it's, we're working on it, it's, it's uh, it's gonna be a fun summer, I think, but. Traffic and everything has gone up, uh, we did get that first day of the, the roundabout project, we got a lot of traffic complaints that day. Uh, but we dealt with them and seen by day two, three, everybody had figured out, so. We had a couple of kind souls up by uh. The trailer court up there, kind of put some logs next to the road, twelve signs to keep people from going around them, because that happened right away, and people made a bunch about it over there. The Nats is basic calls for service on our, our uh, traffic. It keeps going up, we still have a lot of guys picking up uh, grand shifts and stuff for speed, DUI, seat belts. Um, so that's all, I'm sure we'll have more of it as the, the weather gets nicer, we'll have more and more people coming out and putting extra hours in down here. We're doing the uh, the Nits uh, ice cream coupons, we got those in our mailbox the last week, so we will see us, I'll stop them with kids, make sure they got their helmets on, and give them ice cream tickets and stuff. And I don't really have much else.
Did you have any complaints about all the traffic then on seventy six for the first day or two, and up forty fifth?
Yeah, we had people, we were on a separate call for service, and we had lights going on, it was not exactly a fun call. Some guy who lives in Deer Creek, I mean, living in the Horace side of, of Deer Creek. Um, what are you gonna do about all the, the people rolling through Deer Creek? Can't tell them not to, you know, because people take the roundabout in fifty seconds, they come down, they see the road closed. Well, we'll go through Deer Creek, you know, but.
Yep.
We, we're handling it as, as best we can, we've had, we've had more presence, I think, since that came out. It was like, we've, we've made a point to try to have people on both sides if we can, you know, because there's stuff going on on the north side, so. Can't just always be on the wrong side and have to four mile it around to get people, so. It's going all right.
Yeah, yeah, I just knew that was gonna be a point of issue for the first couple days and.
Yeah, the, the trailer court too, they had a bunch of people on day one peeled into the trailer court thinking they could just weasel around and get off to sixty fourth and then turn south again, and. No, you can't, and they were not happy about that, neither was the department.
Yeah.
All I got.
Okay.
As a school called it all with complaints as far as more traffic?
Not that I've heard.
Okay.
I guess.
Any other? Questions?
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, move on to the dust debatement.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to um, discuss uh, the dust control measures on Wall Avenue. I can't remember when we're starting a construction, but I do, I'd like to discuss, I think we do need to put a dust control down. Um, for the residents.
But if we're thinking about starting uh, what, maybe the middle of June or earlier?
So, we opened beds last Thursday, part construction was the law, per construction consent, responsible better policy and requirements of that today. Every indication we've gotten, they want to start as soon as they can, which would be in, once contracts are distributed probably. Four weeks. Get out there, so we haven't had any meetings with them other than just phone calls, emails. But um, one of the things that we do request as part of that responsible better policy is a proposed schedule, so. Long as they submit that. Uh, last time, reached out to Adam, I think it was about twelve hundred, thirteen hundred dollars, was what he said to do. Yeah, it's. He said it was twelve hundred dollars to do thirteen hundred feet. That was last year, I believe, so you can say that the cost is probably more than that this year, just due to everything going up, but. That's what it was last year.
And that is the length of the road that needs to be done?
This was for thirteen hundred feet, so.
What, how many feet do we typically, have we typically done?
At this point, it was, he just, thirteen hundred feet was what he's requesting, so.
Oh.
It's only a fifth of a mile.
So, it'd probably be just enough to do the bridge to, in the tree area there.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think you get to the second entrance to.
I don't think, no. Barely make it to the first one, I think.
Well, I do, I do know how tough it is for residents along that road, I see, I see it all the time, and. Personally, even another thirty to forty five days of them having to deal with that dust is. I think pretty difficult for them.
So, if you ordered it now, how long would it take to actually have it done?
Backed up, they are, well, that's almost. Thirteen hundred, that's up to Lost River Trail, well, fifteen hundred is.
Yeah, but if you're due up to the third entrance, Lost River Road, you're looking at around thirty three hundred, thirty four hundred.
To the furthest entrance?
To go to the furthest entrance, Lost River, that third entrance there.
I don't know if we, I mean.
Just give you a range, so, the first entrance would be about fifteen hundred. Uh, second entrance would be. On twenty four hundred, third entrance would be around thirty four.
I guess I'd like to see at least to the first entrance, um, that, that would give. I don't know if it will cut down on. Dust beyond that, if people used, you know, to get to the first entrance to exit and entrance for Lost River, but um, I don't know, what do other people think about what's cost versus benefit of that?
Just ask them, other vendors, they're backed up right now on demand for it. I have no problem doing that in forty five days.
Better do independent upon parks more, because part might touch, I don't, you're not gonna touch it if you.
Who, who?
The contractor.
Okay, I'll say that again, Jim.
Because it's a chemical, it gets put on the wall.
You, you don't think the, you don't think the contractor would touch it then?
They might not, they might say, no, we don't want that done before we start.
And I understand you're messing with the, the structure of the road at that point, I realize that. Um.
I'd say we probably have to talk to the contractor first.
They came out tonight and said that's. And they might turn around and say it's work, just to do it because we want to be in there. Close our construction site.
So, do we have access to water trucks in them until then? Do we have a water truck?
I suppose that's an option.
Like they have some.
Pink or something.
I think that the parts board has a frame or.
You might have, we're still taking it out or something, yeah, anyway, it's running in here.
Yeah. We don't have a water truck.
Check with KPH and see if they're still using theirs, they used theirs every day on our road last year.
To keep the dust control on, oh, I'd like that, that's an option, would that be cheaper?
I don't know, it's cheaper every day.
But it wouldn't chemicalize up the road that they'd be, be the issue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
They get asked around to see what availability is, uh, just the frequency of having to do that then too, if that's gonna be a daily. Concern, or if that's an every other day thing, we're gonna have to, if we did that.
They're even late start diaps. So they're gonna want to pull some money, grab the water truck.
I understand that.
Ours was about three times a day in the heat, so.
Well, they were home.
Yeah. But they were home a lot.
Yeah. We were also third later on this project.
So, I mean, I don't think any of us up here want to. Have the contractors say we're not gonna touch the road, like, if that's the case, then. I would prefer not to do any chemicals.
I just, rolling it out, I think it's more than our project.
Yeah. Could we talk to the contractor?
That's, yeah, yep.
Okay, so. So, if the contract is awarded, when do you think it might be awarded, soon?
Uh, it'll be the next, of course.
At the next, that's, that's two more weeks, I mean, may, could, could we?
I guess three weeks.
Or three weeks.
Three.
I guess, we're getting down the road then, I'm just thinking maybe the, maybe we could test the contractor. With coming up with a reasonable way to keep dust control before they start, but that's three weeks, I guess. I just know the dust is terrible for the residents along Wall Avenue.
Yeah, I know if everybody drove the speed limit, we wouldn't have that type of dust, because like, if I drive fifteen miles an hour. You don't hardly blow up anything, you drive twenty, twenty-five, you're gonna bring up dust. That's what the problem, if people drive the speed limit, we wouldn't have this problem, but they don't.
Well, what do you guys wanna do here? What's, what's the plan then, you guys are gonna just talk to the contractor?
So.
In the direction of, that's true, it's like a doctor, but KPH, but it involves spending money.
Good. Should. I don't. Know if KPH would be willing to do it, just because they win the bid, so you gotta talk to the person who won the bid first.
Yeah.
I know how much it is.
Your wish would be contingent on not exceeding certain dollar amounts, I'd be digging for thirteen hundred feet, it was. Twelve hundred bucks, just to go on to see if it's made up or something.
That's what you have to do, it's can't exceed.
Chemical for the water.
Chemical or water?
That'd be to do, yeah, chemical treatment for the water. It don't have the exact dollar, well, probably, assuming it costs one. Probably hundred bucks of. Fair fault there, yeah, just, but at least by the time they fill the truck. Buy it. Get back to wherever they are keeping the truck. I'm just assuming, let's assume an hour and just say a hundred dollars, I'm just guessing a number right there, but. You know, it's gonna have, um.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Definitely doesn't.
Not exceed then.
Yep, that's what you have to do.
Um. So, maybe a motion to um, discuss with the contractor who was awarded the bid?
There will be a little bit, a pair of little bit, or two, you'd be fucking.
Okay. But then, yeah, we're three weeks on that.
Yeah, I can talk with parts of all, there's any recommendation from them to control the dust until they start.
Okay.
That's the place to start.
Okay, yes.
But you can direct since that's work of whoever to get it done, it's under the bid threshold, so. You find to work with whoever to do dust control.
Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion um, to reach out to who is going to be. Awarded the contract to discuss potential dust control options for the Wall Avenue corridor. Before and during their construction project. Do I need to do it to exceed?
Yep, yep.
Um, with potential options for dust control not to exceed twenty five hundred dollars.
Second that.
Okay, Jeff does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, all right. Jimmy, ready for the lagoon talk? Whoever wants to pick that up first?
I can.
Okay.
Um, this area regards to, we've had quite a few complaints over the last couple weeks about uh, smell from lagoons, uh. What we've been doing is just making sure folks try to re-educate. Community about. The lagoons, so we reshared articles that we had in horse happenings, you made a call last year, I believe it was, we had our two different articles talking about lagoons, why they smell. What's going on a little bit, uh, we reshared those articles, um, but we want to make sure people understand what's going on there, so. As Jim, he would be able to touch base a little bit on that, also, just to. If anybody had questions about it. Explain what's going on, but this is normal. Uh, after, come the spring, snow melt, I smell. I have a smell going on for a little while, we've had a lot more, it seems like we've got a lot more south winds. So we get the smell more often, um, but that's. At a high level, that's.
That's pretty much what it is, yeah, we just turned over in the spring, and unfortunately, there's been a lot of south wind blowing back across the city.
Yeah, usually the prevailing wind is from the northwest, so it's not a big deal, but this year it has been.
Well, the more we have new people moving into town, and that probably weren't aware. You know, it's probably a good idea that you didn't put those articles on, just so people are aware that it is a thing out here.
Okay, anything else?
If you had any other questions about it.
Nope, the standard spring thing we deal with. All right, Brent, you got the next one on the recall election.
Hey, the next one here is just touching based on. Regards to the recall election, there was recall, or recall election, it was certified, it was announced on May fourth. Um, it was filed with the, with the bargain forum on May fourth, and published in the paper on May tenth. Um. Council member Lanstrom seat is up for recall. She had felt today, either let me know if she was going to resign or not, uh, didn't I receive anything, so she'll be automatically on the ballot. Um, the deadline for any other candidates to file, be on the ballot, is June thirteenth at four PM, so they have to turn that into say hall to me by that time.
I'm sorry, June fourteenth?
June thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
At four PM, and then the election will be August fifteenth from seven AM to seven PM here at the fire hall. Um, the other part of this is regards to received. A proposal or cost estimate from the county, I do believe this is high, they've indicated they believe it's high also, or they wanted to keep it.
We.
To where, if the costs end up, if they end up having to put more time than they expect, or that they initially would expect, that it was covered. Um, the reason why I believe their cost assessment is high is because they show forty hours a week for nine, actually. Ten, eleven weeks. Dedicated staff time towards, you know, with election, I don't believe they're gonna be anywhere near those hours. Uh, the last time we had a recall election, the cost. Was seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy cents. Um, that number though, they did not charge us our staff time, they, some, basically their staff time, they just handled that internally, and they're not bill us for that. Um. I anticipate it's gonna probably fall around that twenty to twenty-two thousand range, but I could be wrong, I'm just telling you what I think it fall. Um. But anyways, what this would be from the county is their proposal is for them to administer the, the election process. Handle all the ballots, gain the workers, you name it, they would handle that.
Total dollar amount that they're.
Total dollar amount they had was thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, eighty-seven cents. You can subtract a thousand off there, they quoted a thousand dollars for. I believe it was a thousand, yeah, for notice of election, we already completed that, so it would be. Minus a thousand dollars, because we already completed that stuff.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to have the election. Ran by the county.
To not exceed.
To not exceed.
What?
Thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
Thirty-five thousand.
Okay, now we make some motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, go to ten, Lucas, what do you got?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have another grounders resolution. Council to discuss and take action on tonight. For temporary refunding improvement bonds series twenty twenty-three B, uh, this bond series includes uh, Wall Avenue East. Wall Avenue West, sixty-sixth Street, sixty-third Street, the Chestnut, Ironwood Project. And Rivers Edge, second edition, uh, the parameters resolution just outlines um, the total cost for this bond issuance, the, the not to exceed amount. And then the interest rate, uh, not to exceed amount, and then sets the pricing committee, which consists of the mayor, uh, and the city administrators. So, for these six projects, the uh, total. Cost of the bonds not to exceed sixty-four million, uh, and then the total interest not to exceed six point five percent. So, the action thing would be for the council to uh, approve the resolution, uh, the grounders resolution. With those values and setting the pricing committee, um, as the mayor and administrator, we have Mike and John, uh, with colleagues here, if you guys have any specific questions for them. Uh, on this bond issuance, they are here to answer any questions that you may have. Regarding this issuance.
Okay.
Were there any documents that were supposed to be in the packet on this, or no?
The resolution itself, I could have sent last weekend and sent it in today.
To.
I just got the.
Who?
I just got the.
Oh, I, I don't have it, we didn't have it in our packet, did we?
Came just before.
I haven't seen it.
Clearly just printed it out, very important.
I haven't seen it, do we have an amortization schedule of sixty-four million at six and a half percent?
You owe my copy of it.
We have, we have prepared a projected uh, continuing solution, do the same.
Okay.
They've been looking at it for a couple of weeks, so, based on our projections.
What's it looking like out in the market right now for debt, I know we talked about this a couple, three weeks ago, it was kind of tough because of the banking.
Subscribe to twenty-seven million dollars, we start to benefit from interest rate, that'll get closer to the sixty-two, sixty-four million. So, we're in the. Probably a hundred basis points, ninety-two hundred basis points, five and a six and a half.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you first.
We're gonna get after it as quickly as possible, and if we did not, let's make. Put this together, lock up some interest rates the next week, to prove this.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be nice if we could bring some of the players that we'd been dealing with back to the table again for some of this.
Congrats.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have the story, to the dollar world.
Yeah.
And then, spend the short term money, we're certainly, we can invest. Giving you all the money they have available.
So, is there an amortization schedule?
Yeah, so council member Lanstrom, it, it's uh, it's a construction temporary bond issue, and so they're actually, it's interest only through the period of the, of bond, so that. The amortization wouldn't actually come until we do.
Yeah, it just shows the total interest at the end of three years, but you may, you may pay it off later to that.
It's next stage, it's rolled in.
So, what is the interest over three years on the loan?
Oh, I can give you our estimates.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, the capitalized interest that would be funded as part of this issue would be six point four or four.
It'll be less than that, of course, if you pay it off early, it's a season, it's based on thirty-six months.
So, yeah.
But as soon as the projects are completed, you'll want to take on to ten.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, for the last, in few issuance is that the city has done, get temporary money now, go with your construction this summer. And then finalize next year, and then we try to do permanent funding for it next year, I don't know what these projects were, how long they're gonna take, but that's. Last few issuances that the city's done, that's.
Because some will probably get done this year, and some might be on a two-year schedule.
It's, most of these are up to schedule, sixty-sixth, uh, sixty-third is getting the two years schedule. A wall west was a two years schedule, and then um. Sixty-third is a two, two year, Rivers Edge is a two year, the other ones are um.
These are payable, payable at any time, so we use it six months, just in case you're in for an initial, you get delayed. We all want to stay in for a month.
And we are able to perm out any project that is done individually, if there's two or six.
Yeah, because there's quite a few in this one, so.
Take advantage as they get.
Right.
So, our last temp bond, uh, that we permanently financed here earlier this year.
Mm-hmm.
Not all the projects that were in that temp bond package were done.
Yeah.
So, we didn't, are currently financing everything, but we were able to knock out the ones that weren't done. And that's what they're talking about, to take the situation, so.
You may have another additional definitive project coming up.
Yeah.
This year to take out those projects, I would like.
We do try to get those. Uh. Define or put into a defendant as soon as we can, or that makes sense when you have them kind of bundled together, and it's callable, because the bond has to be callable at a certain time period, so. If you can't call it for the, like, the first year, or year and a half, or it's.
General, except for a year round.
Yeah. Uh, we're also, by doing the temporary bonds, that can be construction loan, that approach. What we have found is that helps us be able to permanently finance or. Exact, or closer to what the actual project costs finally shakes itself to be. We could bond off an estimate, but if you have change orders, that can be a positive or negative, and that can hurt you. If you don't have enough funds, or by if you do a construct, during, do a short term bond. Else make it to where if you have some cost savings, more overages, you're still able to special assess in future. More accurate amount, and that's why we, that's why we do it in a way.
I know that we had our, you sent a, a new Moody's credit report, um, I just, today, I didn't have time to review it, so, but I would like to have the discussion, I haven't had time to review it, so maybe we could put that on the next agenda. Not that, not that I, not that I expect you guys to come back in person, but maybe. Maybe by Zoom, so, but I didn't, I just, I didn't even have a chance to review it, so, does that have it, so how, how does the downgrade in our credit rating affect what you think our interest rate is gonna be?
So, the, the effects right now, like, in a perfect situation where there's no other variables. A one-step downgrade from a BA double A two to a B double A three would generally mean slightly higher cost of capital or higher interest rate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, however, there's a thousand variables that are back in the market right today, especially, you know, bank failures. Um. Potential debt ceiling issue that we're dealing with, and so.
Yeah.
What we're actually seeing in the market today is that while a one-step downgrade could potentially mean a higher cost of capital. What we're actually seeing in the market today is that while a one-step downgrade could potentially mean a higher cost of capital. With banks failing, there's been a flight to quality in the bond markets, so people are buying bonds, and so that.
Prices come down.
Prices come down, that kind of helps. So is it a wash? I don't know. It might be ten, twenty basis points, but it's not a hundred, it's not four percent.
A point or two points. It's a margin of the model that could go away depending on how many bonds get into the market because of the fact that. People are concerned about stock.
Mm-hmm.
That's the fight to.
Well, the other thing in that report too, there was a lot of ups for us. It's just they had a couple of weight factors. Yeah, it's just.
Just wanna make, we wanna make the point that. With your definitive finding, I'd say, you're doing a special assessment bond. And your audits always trail reality. And for instance, when we do a definitive finance in twenty-three, you won't get assessed and collected till twenty-four. So the twenty-four audit's the only accurate audit that Moody's could use. But they don't account, so they're gonna use the information they have, those systems in twenty-one, which. That's how they do it, but it's, that's not really the reality with the city. Matter of fact, if you read the report, you you will see a great. And especially the management of growth that cities have to deal with. It's beyond significant substantial. It's exponential. Everybody knows that.
Right.
But you, as I've said in the passage, continuing, doing what you're doing, and you will roll through it.
Mm-hmm.
But they have to have faith in the future, obviously, and we do. And we're not in. We're not in a difficult economic environment in this area as compared to the rest of the country, which gets factored in as well.
Again, the conversation we have with Moody's on the phone was still relatively positive, except we're dealing with an economic situation just like everybody else, so just reflect with us staff as well.
And the developers finish the projects, and you give the assessments in place and you begin to collect the assessments. That's, that's, that's a three to five year window, obviously, but you'll get, you'll get the.
You know, and also just to kind of piggyback that, the developers still are coming. And they're still um, bringing projects to the table. Um, so. I feel like that's, they, they're still having faith in that system as well.
They didn't think they could do it, I'm.
Right.
But that's, yeah, I mean, the large, the large scale, overall, the D C, the overall debt, usually you add a whole temporary debt. And the macroeconomic factors that play into what's going on in light of the country are kind of two main factors to the overall rating.
Yeah.
Um, and the city forest does a. A good problem, but this, you know, this project is.
What Brett and Corey have pretty much convinced Moody's to come out for an in-person review, and they do, and it does work, like in the farm. And well, St. Watford City, they'll, they'll be driving down the street and forest as soon as we can arrange it.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions, guys?
Thank you.
If there are, sorry.
Yeah.
There are any questions?
Well, I may, I may ask for the Moody's report, just because I didn't even get a chance to review it. I thought it was in relation to our discussion tonight. Maybe, maybe on the next agenda. You have conversations on it. I did, like I said, I didn't really get a chance to review it.
Of course.
Thank you.
As you, as you understand, or says, look to. It takes a village to work with these problems, and there's a lot of people.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions on this? So what the motion will be here then is for the parameters price uh, to not exceed sixty-four million. And then we'll have the interest rate not to exceed six point five percent interest when we negotiate these bonds. Uh, make a motion, make that motion.
Are you thinking?
No, um. I understand everything's talking about the current market right now, going um. A lot of people that are in the, the stock market right now, I'm moving into short-term bonds right now for safety. So that does help drive down the price, so I'm not worried about the six point five percent um. And I look at that sixty-four million, but. That's what, what do you say, six million dollars in interest in over three years?
Yeah.
So.
It's a lot.
Hope is we can get the interest rate down like we did last time around.
Let's get the point. That's based on.
Right, what we know today, and just.
Harrison, uh, the temp bond package, twenty-twenty-two B, so we're in a vendor centered timeframe, that is, the not to exceed on that was also. And uh, where we came in was actually four point sixty. Now, and again, that's the end of the year, there are a lot more. There's always volatility, it seems. It's just a different degree of volatility, I guess, today. So again, we, we think. Today, six and a half not to exceed.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Send the motions.
Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Anybody does a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Um, I'd like the resolution document. And the Moody's report added to the meeting packet for the, for the meeting, please.
Okay, uh, Kim on to eleven.
Water use plan, we're here at the top one night. Uh, this is kind of a thing we started this two thousand and eighteen. In reviewing cities water treatment, quality, quantity, and kind of storage. Um, at that time, we had the decision made by the city to connect the Casper World. That's where this meter bulb is installed. Uh, now that the meter bulb is installed, the pump, the piping has been in place, the distribution systems throughout the city, we have to create what's called this watering this plant. Water use plan identified the source of the water, so this would be a, right now, the city of Morris. Is there water from uh, the wells, the district chemical building, that gets distributed through the city. Future, it's going to come from Casper World, and we're gonna discuss that with the council, but there's never been a definitive motion made that the city will be one hundred percent. On your Casper World. That would be something that I'm asking of you tonight. At one point, we talked about letting the water, that's not an option right now, it's because of the treatment methods and fluorine, the, the Casco. Cast grow water and there's fluorine in the city. They don't know it's not well together, but there's advantages to either one, or means or chloramines. But um, the, the state basically said make a decision one way or the other, so. The first thing that we have to talk about all the things is switching to gas for water into the district. Um, that's all the pieces that are in place, is just we have to formalize that now. Then the meter bulb is in place, uh, we'll get to it in the update, but the electric to the meter bulb won't be done this week. So, um, or you can switch over to Casper World. The North Coast Department of Health or Department of Environment Quality has to approve your water use plan, so this is the first. The first step in starting that. So, first thing I'm asking for you is a motion that you're going to switch to gas through.
Make that motion? Okay, Jeff makes that motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We gotta figure out what we're gonna do with what we've got, right?
So the next thing is you've got two water wells and a treatment plant that, uh, a treatment chemical building that need to be um. Delved with is the right way to put it, so um. The, what the, the EQ is looking for is basically what are you going to admit that, I know it's kind of on the spot, so we, I don't think we have to. Come to a complete agreement tonight, but I, I think what will suffice them is just. Be the valves will shut up on the outside of the plant, and then um. There was some talk about becoming a bulk seller, is maybe a contractors or. Somebody who would buy water by the bulk. There's a lot of, last year, there was one boring in town, too, ready tech for um. Optical experts, they bought a lot of water from the city. Uh, for their boring activities, and that's something the public works is looking at doing, but it's kind of a poor place, so. The three of you, I don't know, you know, who wells I'm with their partner, I go halfway down to Cheyenne, there's two wells, one on the south side park. One on the south side parked in the chemical building, I got that from the south side, so they're not really the most accessible. But it's not something that I think you want to give up as far as the wells, they're very fine shaped, we've got water there. Uh, it's something that, um, I think if we just say that the plant will be shuttered, and then we can talk. And if they want us to elaborate on that more as far as it. Gets abolished or it just gets locked up or what, that's something that I have to talk with them about, but.
Is there a problem with, like, water just sitting for a long period of time?
Yeah, water, water can.
Yeah, so then how do we, if we. I mean, if we don't do something with it and keep it.
Wouldn't be used for.
Right.
For um, disruption of some of the.
So then it wouldn't matter.
So, right.
Okay.
It wouldn't really matter. There might have to be some provisions made as to how to get that water out of the plant, but at that point, you don't even need to run through a plant.
Right.
Just take it out of the ground.
Right.
If that's the case, so I, I admit there's some things that need to be, a little bit further, things that need to be discussed, I'll bring that back to you, but. I, I needed to get the Casper World thing on there, and then um, the existing treatment plant for now, the wells will be, they won't be capped. But the plant itself, there's a gate belt on the outside, they'll be shot. Plant, and, and, but it won't even be utilized once the um. Version switch over is made.
Jim, do we have to run those pumps every once in a while, though, just for like a maintenance, or make sure they still operate, don't freeze up? Yeah. Upcycling the pumps, even though we're not to use them, we should cycle the pumps every so often, so they don't freeze up.
Something, there's. High iron and manganese water, and they can.
Oh, yeah.
It's just to keep it moving.
You, you're a witness in person.
Yeah, yeah.
All of my appliances are pretty much toast, so.
So, yeah.
So the third part to it is a flushing plan, and obviously the point of a connection to Casper World is at the high school. And the plan will be more detailed in the, in the, or in the, but basically it's gonna start in the north side tunnel, flush it through up, through the south. So just force the Casper water all the way through sys- system, and all through, you know, arrow wood on the south side, and probably through vistas on the. South east side.
Now, is this like dangerous at all? Like, is this gonna blow any pieces in people's homes? Like we witnessed with that project the other day, or like, should I be worried?
So there's a valve that was bound to be closed.
Okay.
Outside of the water tower, down here, the last city council video, we kind of deduced that that's.
Okay.
What would happen to cause the water pressure spike in there.
So we're not interested in that, we're gonna have a mess like crazy.
Whether being more favorable, you know, eating these pressure loggers, they alert, um, public works.
Okay.
So, that there's a, a spike in pressure or wants a pressure, yes.
Okay, and what can a homeowner expect when it's live? Like, what?
There will probably be some discoloration about the sets, the lines get flushed. It's gonna take some time, it's a hard flush and it's. Pushed up, heavy, like, heavy water from.
Are you saying like a couple of minutes or like days?
I don't know for sure, it depends on how much we get to set that meter ball, I'd be further away from that. Um, here, well.
Okay.
The pressure should stay the same. So.
Okay.
More to come on that, but.
Probably like a week or two.
I, I would say so, I don't think it's gonna happen.
You're not gonna notice, like, you fill up your cup, you know, get a couple of hours in the sink. Eight o'clock in the morning, by four o'clock, it's gonna be a big day difference, it's probably not gonna be that, but. Beginning of the week to the end of the week, or over a week or two span. It, it, it's just gonna take a while for all that, all the city water, the city water to flush all the system and.
Okay.
I think what, what else, what I need is a motion to not need the treatment plant for distribution of water.
And what date do you wanna just, it's basically.
The date, because we don't know exactly what the electrical is gonna be, the conduit's into the vault.
Yeah.
Your vault, the power, they're pulling it today and tomorrow, and then that's all got to get done, and then. Once the D Q approves our water use plan, then the switch may be, but it can't be made before the hairs.
Yeah, okay.
Satisfying, I mean, allow it to happen.
As long as not to put a date on it, then it's just.
I don't, I don't think so. I think it's just the, the intent, it's once you switch to Casper, don't use.
Right, that will be decommissioned, the, the, the plant will, will keep the, keep the pumps active.
Do you have any contracts with vendors or enough with chemicals for those plants?
Hawkins, I think, is the one we do, we clever toss and, so, um.
Is that a yearly contract, or is that just?
I'm not sure how that, how that goes through. Uh, we've got a staff meeting tomorrow, which all the works and that, that we can. I needed to get a kind of a consensus from you guys. I think I knew what it was, but I didn't get here to, in a, I think, disorder, et cetera. So what it is, it's kind of a, it's just a disorder, that's. Yeah, because there should be three chemicals in there. Or in gas.
We got a buddy that works for us, so he's, he's a sales guy for me.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, something like that.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to um. Decommission the existing treatment plant at the appropriate time. Once, once the switch has been made.
Okay, so you only make some motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Steph does second. Right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, everybody's in, passes, all right. Go to twelve, look if you got that one.
Yeah. For members of the council, this is just amendment number one to the ID agreement. Permit form to your previous states wanted to, as you may recall, the city council last year approved the. The different agreement for all those developments, however, they requested that the city pause. Construction of those developments last year, uh, in desire to commence constructions this year. Uh, so that resulted in a change in the uh, cost. The structure of projects increased, uh, so we wanted to reflect that, uh, in the, this amendment. As all parties approved and signed the previous agreement, so you can amend it, so what the uh, amendment does, it reflects the. The new cost to construct the project, uh, so that's uh, referenced on page two, and then um. Changes what the letter of credit requirement is, and then there's also the addition of. Um, you'll recall, we had a discussion at your last meeting on uh, those culverts and whether a portal for permit was needed. Uh, so that's addressed here as well, that says that uh, building permits will not be issued. Uh, until that work is, if that oral or permit is required, until that work is done and approved. And signed off by the city and the permitting authority, so it's not make sure the city's covered. Uh, in the event that that permit is required, and then in the event that, you know, whatever culvert work is required under that permit. Is addressed according to permitting authority standards and city standards.
Was that also, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, was that also his concern with whoever owned something?
Yes, we, so still that. The culvert is on private property, or it's in the right of way, you know, wherever it is, so that's addressed in here, saying that. That all has to be taken care of before any building permits, and um, sent this to the developer, developer approved it, signed it already. Uh, agreed to the price in there, agreed to the public language, and then also already provided a draft letter of credit. In the amount that stated in this amendment, um, so what the actual item is, uh, Mr. Merritt is to approve. Amendment number one to the improvement district agreement.
Any questions?
What was the original price?
Down here in the. If you go further down, the original.
The first.
Letter.
First price.
Six point one.
Initial six million one hundred and six thousand, the true price is. Seven million two twenty-five.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have a, a random question. In the original agreement, I noticed, um, under the landscaping standard. I was just wondering if there's any. In light of our new tree policy, um, is there any um. Any uh, change or discussion there, because it says, single-family properties are not required to meet proposed plant units for each lot. They are encouraged to participate. Does that, how does that meld with our current tree policy, or maybe I'm reading that wrong?
So they.
I was just curious.
Elements.
Okay.
That's included in there, uh. Reference to, I don't have other over our trees.
They don't have the over our trees per ordinance.
Yeah.
Say the ordinance there.
And then.
Um, areas that. Are like the. End lot.
Mm-hmm.
I'm trying to think here how many end lots really is, like, two? There's just a couple, but that should be included within the overall implementation, getting the development ready. Before any houses go in, or coming for those end lot, trees and end lots.
Okay.
About.
At the HOA lots, the.
Okay.
Nature lots, right? Is that where you're talking about with your end lots, right?
Well, you have the, if it's an end lot, then they would purchase, it would get the. Trees put in, but a lot of times the HOA lots are putting the trees in part of the development too.
Yeah.
So.
I was just curious, since we kind of upgraded it, we policy, if it, if there was any. Change in language that needed to be in the ID agreement. This was the old ID agreement, so.
Nothing else has changed as far as um. I believe the the residents on the north side um. Asked for some.
Buffer?
A buffer. Between. That has not changed, correct?
Yeah, well, that would be within.
So the only thing changed was there was some sewer on the north side of the. Here green market that. You can drive it.
We. On our trail, that's addressed in section sixteen of the original agreements that that does not change.
Okay.
You guys approve that depends on your June twenty first meeting. And then again, under, so June twenty one, twenty twenty one, privacy bench for Gear Creek Estates first edition, and then February twenty two, twenty twenty two. Privacy bench for Gear Creek second.
Okay, any other questions? I'm looking for a motion to accept the ID agreement, amendment number one.
So moved.
If he makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff, there's a second, all right. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Right, motion carry.
So for that one, uh. Get this all signed um tonight and then all. Part of the ID agreement says that the letter of credit has to be satisfactory to the city trees office, so I will look at that. And then get that from the bank and then provide it to Colliers, um because that's required as part of the city bonding, so we'll. Um, get that done hopefully tomorrow.
Thank you.
We're on the thirteen, Lucas or Jim, let's pick it up.
So I'll, I'll start.
Yeah.
Jim, but for this one, we have the uh original improvement district agreement for Rivers Edge second edition. So big development of the west side of town. It's the standard uh improvement district agreement, but I'll go through some of the uh. Some of the larger provisions for this development, Caspero water will actually be providing water to this development. Uh, part of the agreement that the city entered into at Caspero um in twenty sixteen. Uh, I believe, says that the city will construct the improvements as part of the the overall project. Uh, and then include that cost in the project, but then Caspero actually bonds for uh their portion of it. And they also request that the city uh city's letter of credit covers their work of the improvements as well. Uh, so that is addressed in this ID agreement, saying that the city does require a letter of credit. And that um the cost of that letter of credit will cover the city's full improvements and then uh the Caspero improvements as well. Uh, the overall project cost for this one is twenty one million five hundred fifty five thousand dollars. Uh. That that is broken down into local improvements, regional improvements, and then Caspero water improvements. And then the letter of credit will be sixty five percent of the local improvements and the Caspero water improvements. I believe we're still waiting on a breakdown from.
Yeah, we.
More engineering, we got a scenario on it. On the the actual cost of the um. The breakdown for the local and the Caspero water, but the overall cost is what it is. Once you get that breakdown, it's just sixty five percent. Um, also it's totals. So that's those and. The land dedication for this one, the developers dedicate lot seventeen, block three. Lot twelve, block eight, and lots four and eighteen, block nine of Rivers Edge second edition to the Horace Park District. Uh, and then the developer also raised to sell lots seven and seventeen, block nine, Rivers Edge second edition to the city. Uh, for storm sewer purposes, the city will have uh plot lots and then access to the plot lot. Uh, for the latter two lots that are referenced. Uh, this agreement also has um an ownership operation and maintenance schedule that's attached as an exhibit, as the maintenance plan. That exhibit P. As referenced earlier, Caspero will provide water. Waste water for the develop development will be provided by the city. There's sanitary sewer lift station in Horace Bay. Uh, that will be constructed east of the storm water retention pond on the eastern side of Rivers Edge second edition. Waste water from the development will be collected and routed to this lift station and conveyed to the south along the eastern edge of the development. And will pass the Rivers Edge Edition wastewater treatment plant located approximately one hundred feet to the east. This location, it is proposed to interconnect with the Rivers Edge Edition private force being to intercept that subdivision's wastewater upstream. Of the existing treatment plant, Horace Bay will then continue south along Avenue and connect to the city's existing gravity sewer main. As referenced earlier, storm water will go to lot seventeen, block nine, it's a big retention pond that's getting constructed in development. And then lot seven, block nine of Rivers Edge second edition will provide access to that large retention pond, so the city will have access across a large lot. Uh, to get to. That the pond. Uh, also as part of this um wetland mitigation. Required to be purchased for this um development. There's wetlands that are there that have been farmed, but uh wetland credits are required to be purchased. Uh, as. Wetlands will be no longer as a result of this project, uh so that cost is included in the cost of the project at the tune of three hundred fifty seven thousand one hundred seventy five dollars. Like the breakdown was forty something thousand per uh wetland credit. That's not uncommon for wetland mitigation credits to cost that much. If you are taking a wetland um out of the system to draining it, you're required to replace it either with. Uh, like acreage, I think at a two to one ratio, or you can buy uh wetland mitigation credits as part of a mitigation bank they call them. Uh, and you have to buy credits from a bank that's located within your area. Uh, so that's the value that says uh by that bank is approximately forty something thousand per acre. So that's where you get that three hundred and seven thousand dollar. Amount. And then everything else is our standard. Language.
Lucas, is it appropriate, though, that this wetland mitigation is included in this ID agreement? How many have we actually done in the city of Horus this way?
I don't even see if Horus has ever had to buy any wetland mitigation credits.
Because.
Today.
I talked, so.
So I mean, it's, I I know where you're going with this, the the risk is out the developer's risk because it's gonna go into the cost of the lot, so the specials are. So it's the developer's risk as far as being able to sell um lots.
But here's, here's my problem, though, with this. My problem is that. There is no improvements. This is not, this is basically a fee from the government. Saying, because there's a wetland. Here. You have, if you're gonna decommission this wetland. You have to basically put funds or credits towards another wetland, like it's just a fee. And when I talked, I actually called um the engineer corps or whatever they are in Bismarck and. They told me that um. He had to get a permit for like seven point eight five acres of some sorts, okay? I don't, and I'm just wondering, guys, we need to have a discussion on this because is it appropriate? Because in my mind, this is not an improvement. This, this has nothing to do with what is cited up here. In the, in the recitals up here where it talks about what this, what this is for.
So that being is the the purchase of the wetland credits benefits the entire development and it's utilized for stormwater purposes.
It's not, though.
The city's gonna take a big hole and just do pond, and that's where all the water for this area is going to go.
So in my mind, in my mind, I feel like we're being utilized as a bank. That's, that's how I feel about it, because it is literally because he has to pay a fee to the government. It 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 has nothing to do with an improvement. It's a fee. That's it.
It's still allowing the development to proceed. I totally get what you're saying. We have a conversation from a staff level and the thought is, but all those wetlands are giving credits to the development, it's not.
Why can't he pay for them? Why can't he put that on the price of the lots? It's not going to a regional, it's going to a local. You guys are putting it in a local agreement. So why can't he, why does the city have to take those funds? And be responsible for that when it's in, the permit is in his name? It's not in the city of Horus. The, the permit is in. The developer's name. We didn't apply for that permit.
So the reason the city didn't apply for the permit, the city doesn't own the land.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, I, like I said, we had this conversation at a staff level, but with all those wetland mitigation credits, the development itself doesn't happen. And so, again, the the risk is on the developer to sell the lots because specials are still gonna be tied to the lots. Um, and and so I see what you're saying, it's, you tie it on to the price of the lot itself, sell it, or?
Yes, that's what I'm wondering.
Specials, either way, the property owner.
I mean, I feel like we're kind of getting into a slippery slope here. I mean, I feel like we did an amendment. Not that long ago for. Landscaping. I mean, when, when is the ID agreement? I mean, this. And that was in a different development, okay? I'm just trying to figure out why. Why we have to. Why do we have to take that on when, when he could? Pay for that. That's, that's his land. I'm just, I really, I'm not trying to make a big huge fuss, I'm sorry, guys, um please bear with me, but it. It doesn't make sense to me why we would just continue to allow the city of Horus to just be a bank all the time. When this has nothing to do with local improvements. It is a fee because he wants to decommission his land as a wetland. That's his. That's him.
I think, I know, I think I know, when you talk about the landscaping, are you talking about, uh, I think I brought up in Lakeview, or no, I don't. There was a, there was a change order for additional landscaping needing for like Babbling Brook or whatever, and I think we had a, I think I recall we had a discussion that that's. What, what's the distinction between an aesthetic in a, in a development versus an actual. Defined special improvement district, and I know, I know that we had some conversation about it. I mean, does, does. Does this fit with the definition of an improvement district of sanitary sewer, storm sewer? Water mains, water and sewer. Manhole fire hydrant, uh, street sidewalk curb and gutter. I, I guess my, I kind of see your point. I don't know if it fits that definition. I mean, I think it's careful, I think we need to be mindful, like in Lakeview, I think we need to be mindful about sticking to the definition of the improvement districts and what. We're saying comprises the assessment district. What costs comprise the assessment district?
And you know what? I'm fine if council wants to allow these kinds of things in, if you guys want to have a discussion on this, but. In my mind, I, this, this was a standalone. Agenda item. A while back. And I asked questions on it and it got tabled. And then it just gets put into an ID agreement. And I'm just trying to figure out. Is it? Why was it not in an ID agreement before and now it is? It, it just doesn't make sense to me. And maybe I'm.
Haven't had a development.
Well, apparently the state said that Don has another one that's possibly gonna be happening. In Cub Creek. They, they said Cub Creek to me. And I was like, no, I'm talking about Rivers Edge.
Like it already happened in Cub Creek?
That they're waiting for something. With Cub Creek, and maybe it's on hold or something, but he mentioned Cub Creek to me. So I'm just trying to figure out, like, is this something we're gonna be doing from now on, or?
I think that's great. See, the work, work and requirements become more and more, this starts with the talk, this is a. Federal.
Yeah, it's a federal fee, so. Okay.
So, I mean, this, this is also dying one part of two.
So they put it in their ID agreements?
So the pond he's creating there, the water retention pond, what effect does that have on this wetland? Is it? Maybe they made any consideration?
Committing it at all, that's why. It's incredible. Forget where, where they're at.
Well, yeah, it's, it's on board, they're, they're on the board.
And they'll consider a pond. Certainly like a wetland, but it also is there that.
So what's the thought about, it says the cost to acquire the the land mitigation credits will be included in the local improvement. And assess against the development, so it's just going to be assessed to Rivers Edge second. Correct? So, but. I mean. If it's, if it's part of the drainage, why isn't it, I mean, I'm not advocating for spreading it out anymore, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to decide if I actually think it. If it fits in a special assessment district.
Stick the nail on the head though, right there with what your words just said. Curbs a portion of it.
Well, it's.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
It's, it's a fee that he is signing off on a permit for. To me, he said that almost should be at a hundred percent. I'm not trying to get into that discussion right now, but that's just my.
That place should be on a hundred percent?
Since it is a fee that he's applying for, he has to apply for that permit. Why are we covering a portion of that, you know, only asking him for sixty five percent of that fee? Instead of have him pay the full. Whatever you said it was, three hundred and some thousand dollars. To me, that's. We are covering a portion of that at that point, or not covering it, but. We are assuming liability for a portion of that, because he's not covering the full. Cost of the permit. You understand what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I mean, that's similar, you you made the all the. Local improvement.
Yeah, but this is kind of different because he took a perm out, permit out in his name with the state of North Dakota. Like.
Yeah, I can't speak for the developer, so I just.
But you saw what I was.
So I'm trying to cover the city.
I know, but I just don't know if it should be in there, is what I'm saying.
And then if it's not, I don't want the building, those part, I don't know what happens, so I can't, I can't speak.
I was gonna say, I mean, what, so if it wasn't in there, what would happen? I mean, he would just assess it to the price of the lot.
We can't speak for.
What? Well, what has he said about, I mean, when did we find out about this, or what is, what is the developer saying about it?
Project costs, it's probably the storms here.
It's not, though. Not part of this storm sewer.
But it's part of the project of, oh, without it, project doesn't happen, and then. Storms are combined then, or wetland waters there, water then go into the.
It's no different than any permits that we have to get through our M board. Or anything like that, really, you have to have those permits to be able to.
Yeah, the issue here is that the, the real issue is that these mitigation credits are still expensive.
Yeah.
So other times they represent, I mean, it's even different in that this area, they're forty thousand, different kind of represent in central Minnesota, it's like twenty something thousand. In Florida, four hundred thousand. I mean, it's just. Depends on the area where you are, how much the cost of.
Well, I guess. Own the land, you're kind of aware of it.
Permits are included in. Overall contract.
Yeah, at the end, at the end day, the end user, whoever buys those lots is paying more. If it's.
Yeah, with.
Specials.
With special assessments.
Developers.
So the other way to look at it too is that at least with special it's spread out, whereas if it's the cost of the lot. I am. Granted, it's in the mortgage, but it's gonna affect your.
But it's in your mortgage and it's. Able to be right enough with your taxes too, but, okay, well. Especially since we're, you know, talking about. These special assessments, I mean. I don't know, you guys. I, I don't know.
He said this was common, West Fargo does this?
Yeah.
They've had wetland mitigation issues?
The wild, I think.
I have to do as well, I have to not, said that it's part of the business.
What do they ask for, for a letter of credit?
They don't have a letter of credit, yeah.
It's that promising.
Well, we're not doing that, so.
We're gonna stick with the sixty five percent.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
All right.
I have to say, I'm sorry, I just have a couple more questions. So the, the breakout between the local, regional and the water is, I know is, is blank in the. Yeah. In the, so. So. Okay, um, and then were there supposed to be attachments to the ID agreement?
Yeah, I just gotta tell me.
Cause I don't have the attachments.
I know it's how it sounded like it's.
It's like a. So for total construction.
I saw the total number.
Yeah, but what I was gonna say is the local was a little over six point seven. Regional ten over eight point six.
Yeah, but what I was gonna say is the local was a little over six point seven, regional ten over eight point six. Local gas, we will just move nine hundred thirty-three thousand seventy-six street. Um, we'll give them this with the plan to specs and a hundred and thirty-five dollars in rotation and then seventy-six thousand four hundred and twenty-seven thousand five.
Um.
And, and then can you, could we just go through again? So I don't remember. There's probably one, maybe I haven't been, um, parties to them, but I haven't seen them broken up before, local, regional and water. So could, could we just run through again what the communication is and has been for the, the regional improvement, which is going to include last river, I mean, Rivers Edge first. Um, ki- can we just run through again what the communication will be or has been to those residents per special assessment policy?
Aside from that portion.
Yep.
So I don't know exactly what the city has done as far as notify them. They get notified when the plat is in starting the process. There's some comment on the plat. There is nothing as far as a comment on. Yeah. Proposed specials, say.
They were notified that they were included in the special assessment district. When, I think we approved it in March, right?
Policy, they should be.
Did we, I think we just approved it last month or March, no March. So did notification of, um, that they're included in the assessment district, did, did that go out?
I guess there was a, this was right around the time, this district, I believe was created right around the time. Policy, I think this was kind of a transition time. This been around, the district was created a while ago.
I thought it was just.
Twenty-two number.
What did I see in March? I thought it said something that said March, we.
Two, but it was created around that time of when the policy was just getting.
This district was created February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
That would be why. The policy was not in fact when this district was created.
Okay.
So I think Jim mentioned the vast majority of the land impacted with this region. Yeah, it's.
I know, but I think.
Just making sure.
So did it?
Yeah.
So the special assessment district for Rivers Edge second was created back in twenty, twenty-two?
Well, the district was created March seventh, twenty twenty-two, so.
For Rivers Edge second?
Yeah, petitioned by February fifteenth, twenty-two. The district was created March seventh, twenty-two.
Cause what did we?
Um, I think, you know, it would probably be a good idea to let them know because they come in here complaining about drainage issues. I would like them to know that, one, they're going to get a little bit of relief and number two, they're also gonna have to pay for it.
Be bad.
Since I've been. With the developer and residents from Dream Fields Development and Rivers Edge first, we're stressing to the developer and them to like to help improve the drainage. Yeah, some of the drainage problems that both of those other subdivisions have been having. I know that was a discussion and that was a stressing points.
I know, but it's been some time and you know, when you don't really think about it and all of a sudden you see construction and you're like, wait, what's happening?
It doesn't hurt to just have.
Yeah. I just worry because I know that they have, you know, talked and they've come in here and visited about their issues out there and but also just let them know, like, there's gonna be a bill.
Yeah.
So. So it was over a year ago that Rivers Edge second? I mean, I think, I feel like we just, uh, maybe I'm way off here. I feel like we just.
Twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three.
I feel like we just.
I thought we were just doing.
Like, like within the last four months.
We did that improvement district there and then he's put it on pause for a year, right?
Rivers Edge second is, oh, yeah, it's been a long.
Oh, we were, yeah, we were talking about Cub Creek, Stephanie.
Right, but then we approved Rivers Edge second. We must approve the, what did we approve?
Yeah.
Like in the last six or, okay.
Yeah, that's probably what we.
I mean, again, I just kind of. My, my only concern is just, I want to make sure we have good communication with the residents of Rivers Edge first. That, that's my whole point. Um, I just, I know they have drainage issues. Um, I just want to make sure that they understand that they are within the special assessment district. And, uh, once, what will the communication be going forward or when will they get an estimate once we bid it out? Or when are they going to get a next notification that we're going to address our drainage issues? And this might be an estimate cost for them.
So we haven't set out for bids yet.
Right.
The next thing on the process.
Okay.
Typically in the past, if the project is coming close to the original estimate, it's already been gone through. Haven't done any additional notification because nothing can change from the beginning. So, um, this one, uh, I think it was Cub Creek second, it was put on the website or was it? Sent up from the, there were some comments obviously from the existing properties, Cub Creek first addition. Um, I, yeah, I'll look back at my file. We'll see if we have a breakout on this one yet.
But I think Jim wasn't a part of the bid too, was for an improvement on the Yeah. One, so I mean, we gotta wait till we get, till we find out.
There's an alternate for street lighting in that area and then there's another, uh, storm stream that are, the outlet structure with no control on it, gets taken to the, on and run out through a station, through a pump station, the second edition.
Right, so we'll know when the bid comes back, what we're dealing with as far as costs and then because otherwise, right now, we would just be sending out, saying, hey, you're part of the special assessment district. They should know that already, but uh, we don't have anything more to tell them at this point. So once, that's part of C here is we're gonna go out, you know, approve to go out for bid on this thing. Get some numbers back and then we'll have a little bit better idea. What can we do here? Is it too expensive to do certain things or do we have to go rebid or what?
Okay, maybe that's the best time then to reach out.
I, I think you would be, once you have actual. Yeah, this would be better because otherwise if we're speculating. Send something out and then a month later, then we have actual numbers from a bid.
Yeah.
Are different that would it could get very confusing.
Okay, I agree. Nope, I agree. I just want to make sure when we get to that point, then we do some letters to those residents or a meeting or something, just for communication purposes.
Okay, we talked about the ID agreement. Is there any more conversation on the ID agreement?
I do, I do want to make sure you are aware, apologies, the take longer on this one, but Lucas mentioned that there's the pond lot within there, that pond lot. So after this ID agreement, there'd be a purchase agreement type of that. It'd be nearing the same way we've done pond lots before. So like the ponds in Cub Creek, the dollar amount. Basically, we've been treating them all the same. It's a dollar twenty-seven. Our city land is a lot more expensive than a dollar twenty-seven a square foot. Now, um, but that would be brought to you within this purchase agreement that would be coming out of your dues, um, after a developer's agreement is done. By doing that, when it's part of regional, the pond is regional. It's, um, everybody that's playing ball with in that or participating in some of that cost. That's why you do the pond lot purchase approach.
Who maintains those lots?
And city will, once we purchase them and the pond is all put in place, then we've saved other works department maintains those and we control those ponds, like the water levels and everything. By doing that, what we found is that our staff were able to attention these ponds better. Otherwise, we put in the hands of the developer and are they gonna watch that or not? So it gives us more control. So I make sure you're aware.
And did you say that exhibits are available?
Yeah, I, I didn't have.
Okay, could we get those added to the meeting packet too, Brenton? I mean, I haven't seen them either.
I'll, I'll send, I'll send you updated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, anything else in the ID agreement? I'm gonna do these one at a time, Lucas. So you're looking for a motion to accept the ID agreement?
That's all I'm looking for right now. Jim, we'll get into the other ones.
Yep, that's what I'm saying, so. Do we want to make a motion to accept the ID agreement? Okay, Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so everybody will go on to B. Jim, I'm guessing that's you.
Next thing we have is improving the plans and specifications of River then second additions. Uh, you were given a couple of your package. You should have a couple sheets here, general layout plan for the area of the north. So, so, um, one thing I want to bring your attention on this question is their off-site improvement service, their second. As part of that, Casper rules requiring another waterway to be installed from coming seventeen over, over to the um, north side of Rivers Edge second edition along the south side of seventy-sixth avenue. Those costs are factored in what Lucas talked about in the, in the testament that we had. And there's also seaward on the south, like Lucas said, from the, we changed out the Rivers Edge first, uh, water treatment. Uh, new smart treatment plant. So, um, that's all factored into this, but it is an off-site improvement, but it is still being done as part of as part of this project. So, um, there's a lot, a lot going on with this project, large area, but both of it is just a urban subdivision, better streets, storm sewer, water mains, the water station, sanitary water station, horse mains. All that construction of the pond. Um, this is one subdivision where the developer is proposing to use a kiosk for mailbox cluster units versus having them intermingled through all of the subdivisions. There's a lot here. Up towards the top, it's just for the kiosk units. Um, there's some shared use path, there's some private, private drives. And the city not be paying for the street and that, that's gonna be a cost of the developer, of private drives.
Why do we do private? What, like, what's the point of the private drive?
It reduces the amount of right open dedication. It's, so they need some more. And then the backside of these features like along the river. So the area, if you know, there's the, the area with private drives is along the river. On north of the River, which first edition and then along the pond, on the south south side backing up along the west side of the research additions.
And who maintains that after it's been done?
Well, we put the street on it and the government maintains that.
I have a lot of heartburn with those roads. Because I don't think that they're maintained very well, especially in the winter. I mean, even up by the Dairy Queen. Irritating, so I really hope that if we're gonna continue to allow private drives, just so that they can skirt around the rules of the city ordinances. Um, we, I think we really need to make sure that they're taking care of them. So how do we bring that up, Brenton? Like, because this, the residents are gonna call the city and the city's gonna say, well, you gotta talk to so and so, that's not our deal. But, but, but really what I would, would hope is that we would say to them, like, hey, like, we allow you to have a private drive, let's get it together.
I think that area probably did well for experience.
I think it's more similar to covens.
Yeah.
We, we kind of get a bad name then though, because residents sometimes don't understand it. And then they're like Naomi said, then they're calling the city saying, why are these rules not being taken care of? And then we're like, oh, well, they're private. It, I, it's a difficult situation.
One area you're working towards is having, I don't know why the signs haven't been put up. I saw that I did buying.
This is a private road.
So private, like a different color sign saying private road underneath it, so it's.
How about with a phone number?
Maintain by them and put a phone number?
Yeah.
Would be nice.
It's based on the.
Really get so big.
We can change that side more than.
Yeah, so typically, street signs are green or white letters on a green backing. On a private, they will be need white letters on blue backing with a private drive placard underneath that to signify that they are.
Okay, well, any private drives, can we just make sure those signs are up like as soon as possible? I mean, I don't know where else we need them in town yet, but it, it really bothers me and I would prefer to stay away from private drives as much as possible.
So, um, the schedule I got on here would be, uh, work advertised for approved by specs tonight. Advertise twenty-four, thirty-first at six, open bids on the fifteenth. Um, board the construction contract in June, end of June, beginning of July, where your next meeting calls, I go forward to stand up right there. Third is in the middle of the fourth again, so. You're gonna touch on that. Um, substantial, which will be in the next year, large project. Probably cost for construction is around seventeen million and project cost is around twenty. So. Sucks up a lot of that.
Do you have any concern about construction timing with Wall Avenue?
Not, because I don't think much of this is gonna start this year.
Okay.
It's gonna be towards the end of the year.
Okay.
It was one of, uh, um, yeah, one of the most things where we're finding that by bidding these projects with a more realistic timeframe, it's, it's increased our, our kids, I think, in a and this one was the same thing and you shouldn't grant this much work until the end of the year. And there is a note in the plan, since there is work going on on Wall Avenue, so they have to come out on the seventieth sixth.
Okay.
That was a big thing when working with the Dream Fields Development and even Rivers Edge was access off seventy-six. So it'd be that it's like a green. Seventy-ninth street. That's a near south collector road, just west of Dream Fields. That was, that's why um, yeah, you should see that area within that plat was, you're pushing for that collector to be included into this project so that there's access. Hopefully not going through Dream Fields as much. They go down just a little further and they come in that way.
Okay.
That's what we're trying to push.
And is the, I just have one last question. Is the water connection for Casper that's necessary? Is that just assessed to Rivers Edge second? That portion of the cost?
I, I don't want to speak for Casper, because they need their own assessments.
Okay.
So I don't know how their policy works out. If it's an off-site improvement, I believe more than all of the, most of the benefit of any residents, but they, um, maybe participated a little bit with that. I, I'm not sure.
The first, you mean?
No.
Rivers Edge first.
Casper District themselves, they've participated a little bit. I'm not one percent sure, but, um, I do believe it's, it's tested, but
Rivers Edge second. So, okay, okay.
Okay, anything else on the resolution of planning, improving plans and specs? Any questions on that? Was I gonna look for a motion to accept resolution, improving plans and specs?
I'm moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion, Stephanie has a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Okay, Jim, next one.
Uh, next one is just authorized.
So moved.
Okay, now we make some motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, motion carries. Okay, men, number one to cost estimate, Jim.
This is a upgrading or amending in here for, uh, when this project was originally proposed over a year, there will be a, uh, project cost was total budget cost around seventeen million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, with what we have now, we're like Lucas said, we're twenty, over twenty-two million dollars, twenty-two by two, two fifty. Uh, reasons for this uh, increase is there was, um, some changes that were done to our access drive, think this changes landscaping. Um, around some of those common building, your kiosk, the mailbox kiosk building versus individual cluster boxes. Um, seventy-eighth avenue, that's most street section, the build out of that. Uh, treatment plant abandonment removals, discharge structure to the storm sewer. Uh, this is a, to the, uh, um, alternate, which is the River and Edge first edition lining and, uh, seventy-sixth avenue, the Casper Road connection that we were just talking about. And then leading over the paving, the pavement, uh, private drive paving, you know, those costs to the, so, um, we would just be bending that cost to be what is the most current based on the plans right now, so.
Yeah, any questions on that? Okay, Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Definitely has a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm gonna be glad to see that septic system disappear. But it has been, it, once we got it working, it's been working, but I'm still gonna be glad when it's gone. All right, uh, number fourteen, Lucas.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, good news on this one. Um, last.
last two weeks, we have received a lot of, um, step offers from the city. Actually, it was all for your last action. Uh, so the first two items I had are uh, Mr. Cousy came in at your last meeting and, and couldn't come to terms to agreement at that meeting. However, in the meantime, he has since accepted the city's final offer, but I haven't received a signed offer or assigned purchase agreement yet. Uh, so I, I still think that it'd be best for the city to approve the resolution of necessity for Cousy's property and the resolution of offer to purchase. I don't think they'll be necessary, um, but I still think that, that we should just approve them. Um, and then for your action item C, we'll include, uh, Cousy's purchase agreement in that motion, but, um, procedurally, I think it's, it's best if we still do, uh, items four A and four B. Uh, remember at your last meeting, the resolution of necessity just says that the property, uh, that's owned by, um, Mr. Cousy is needed for this project. And then the resolution of offer to purchase is the, uh, high, highest offer that the city is going to offer uh, out of that ten percent fifteen hundred, uh, or step up increase. Uh, so the, the first action of Mr. Mayor would be, uh, approving the resolution of necessity can Cousy property.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to accept the resolution of necessity. Okay, Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Naomi does a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, uh, the resolution of offer of purchase, again, we're going with the highest number that we, uh, came up with. Any questions on that? Right, I'm looking for a motion to accept. Okay, Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Naomi does a second. Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And the third one, a motion of purchase agreement will include my runs in that one as well.
So, so for the purchase agreements, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll have, uh, Mike Snellgrove, uh, Brandon Kim Snellgrove, the Wallace's, Conings, Cousy, and Benjer be the purchase agreements for that. And then we'll include Bauer in that. Uh, Bauer though is on the east side, so I'll bring it up again at your next, this next item, but just to play it safe. Okay, purchase agreements listed, so those things put it in, in the motion now. Uh, so Snellgrove, Snellgrove, Wallace, Coning, Cousy, Benjer, Bauer. The purchase agreements be approved with the, the highest value.
Okay, look for a motion to do that motion.
All motion.
Yeah, Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second. Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So with, with that, Mr. Mayor, we're down to two.
Yep.
Properties, but those any other else?
Okay.
Alright, okay, we'll move on to fifteen. Then Jim, you've got that one.
Yeah, solo value entry proposal brought forward by the contractor that's nineteen to just some, some adjustments were made to the approach slab onto the Cheyenne Avenue. For Cheyenne, we have a, uh, Wall Avenue, uh, bid. Wall Avenue project, it's a deduct, deduct of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Just a discussion with contractor and heard you guys need the need up to the approach line, so.
I like those.
Yeah. Hurting on on the right foot, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to look for a motion to accept the change order number one before anybody changes their mind.
I will make that motion.
Okay, Naomi makes a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second. Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries sixteen, Jim, you got that?
Oh, I just have. Bauer, first section, uh, okay, Bauer on the east side.
I thought you did that on.
I know, I'm just playing it safe with doing it twice.
Okay.
Because, just because it's in different districts.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, hold on, let me get that. Okay, Naomi makes a motion. Jeff does a second on that one. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright. You okay now, Lucas? Alright, just making sure. I want you to have a sleepless nights here. Jim, you're up.
Last Monday construction started, you haven't seen around town, um, in the states, they haven't going down a little out there yet, but the, uh, nice thing reported is that the water replacement project, the last of the waters water base should be installed here in the next, this week, we'll say. And then I just just told by a text message that their crews are staying, I mean, get this one straight. Uh, they will have a crew staying in town to wrap up APH related bunches items and ANL will be on site to landscape and see the hopes of having everything seated by or around the first week in June. So, that's a couple of weeks out, which is the a nice thing to, nice thing to see with that project.
Where?
What's that?
Where?
The water replacement project.
Oh, so like my area.
Yes, so like your yard, your neighbor's yards and everybody around here, all of it. So, that, uh, can't count the basketball. Yeah. Um, we have some good news from Terry Gardens there as well. The sense of schedule we put in last week, but due to the rain, postponed, so it's drying out out there, so they're planning on doing it next week to do that. Up Creek has kind of been on hold just due to, um, due to, uh, rain last week. Uh, we got to look at the year vault a little bit and it is different, uh, agenda item, but I think it's being pulled to there and, uh, once that's the case, it gets powered up. And, um, one step closer to the convergence to move to Caserole, so. Sixty-sixth Street is progressing with some landlords on some easements and stuff along that, but for the bulk of it, the owner continuing along, it's fifty-seven other feet of roadway to be built. Oakdale Farms fourth, the only thing remaining on that is some sidewalk, you know, working on that as we speak. Fifth edition started eight, it was, uh, carry over from last year. Around about the seventy and sixty-four, at the county project, there had been some concern about the condition of the detour route. I drove in today before the meeting and talked with Northern Improvement last week about it. Um, said some dry weather would help. Looked like they had added some crushed concrete and some billings to try to bolster, bolster that area. Um, still soft in areas. I will be honest with you that it is soft in areas, but, um, I think they're working in the right direction to get it, to get it earned though, to get down there, so. Um, I did have a resident stop by before the meeting today, in my office, and asked about placement of not through street signs being put in Greyhawk. Um, you're not worried about the cars coming through? It's the fact that they're getting through to sixty-four, it's realized they can't go anywhere, become mad and then trying to go back back through Greyhawk. So the suggestion was brought up that maybe there could be some signs there and help through street or the wall letter or something on all those lines so that they didn't go back three twice. So, I'll bring that up, up to the county. Um, he said, Wall Avenue was open bids last Thursday, we got five bids. Yeah. Park construction, we go down the only often issue, engage. And, uh, JR, so we got a, a couple of different ways and we got to pass. Yes, the R S over ten million dollars and the prices range from about six-nine to eleven, you're kind of right, that ballpark. As we talked about earlier, responsible better policy, um, information has been requested. But that whole period, we're ready for the next meeting. East side, there were, the east side, we that one, um, nothing you need to pull that. They skipped over sixty-third Street, sixty-third Street bids were open last week Tuesday. There were nine meters on that one, seven, seven, five and seven. So, um, that one came in right about where we thought it was going to be as well. So we'll have the responsible better policy stuff and all that ready for the board next meeting. Arrowwood third addition, they continue on. They're going to take a little breather right now. There's some chickens in the way. Chicken coop. There was an encroachment onto the property owned by the developer, so he's giving some notifications to people who gets some chickens and, uh, I think there's a shed for her too, so. Is that the field you tend to want?
Does that development look like it's higher, more elevated than? Okay, it just looked like they brought in a lot of extra filler.
So there's, there's dirt, it looks like so there, but, yeah.
Uh, speaking of which, is, are they done bringing fill into Maple Lakes now? Because we keep seeing more and more dump trucks bringing in black dirt.
I will never.
Not to that monstrous pile, but they've told us many times, they're done bringing stuff in yet. They're still bringing stuff in.
So what we're seeing is there are contractors who are stockpiling stuff in these places around town. Lots that they own, and so I make like the states, it's happening on concrete. And, um, not quite sure why, having a estimate as to why, but don't really know what's, what's going on with that. And that's normally about go over the cities handling a lot of that stuff, just to do storm water and similar things, so.
Weird.
Been too involved in that, yeah.
You, you don't normally see it stockpiling on just like a one or two individual lots, but.
Yeah.
That's. Yeah, that's happening there.
And then Chestnut, they've been working over there, down in mining, they ran out of product, so they're waiting for their product to get there and, uh, in length replacements are going to start as soon as they get them here, as soon as they get delivered. They were outside heading last couple of days. Probably see the pipe along, kind of seventeen in that area, that's for enforcement connection to get station number four off of the, to get it on to the SSL. So it takes the lower off the station two with one. And there's been a lot of that area is moving here. It's got a history of pumping a lot of clear water, which is just groundwater, saltwater. It's just at times inundating two, inundating one and it's compounding issues. So, this is the way it came in off of that, the SSL. Not the end all be all, because we're still being charged for treatment of that water from that wastewater. So there still have to be enough space to reduce some of the clear water that's in there. That's the, uh, Cliff Notes version as we, as we go today. There will be more formal reports starting next month on progress of this problem. So maybe something to follow along with that, so.
Thanks, Jim.
Alright, Brenton, what you got?
Okay, um, first item here, also I have Burke and Brad about asking about adding items to the agenda. Question, yeah, for council is how would you like to approach being able to add agenda items? Do you want to have, you're, you're able to add them at the beginning of the meeting when you're through the agenda? However, is it, do you want to have as individual council members? You talk to myself or the mayor, or do you want to have as council members need to request that? What is your preference? I want to respect that either way, but typically how it's been done is either or my understanding has always been, you know, two council members or the mayor asks for that. Or we have, you know, the operations type stuff, staff wise. So, what is your preference? You know, your preferences, do you want to have it as individual council members? You get to be by a certain date. If you do, I would ask that we'd have that by like either Tuesday or Wednesday before the council meeting. The reason why is because we're developing, we sit down on a staff level on Tuesdays before the council meeting to put, to start drafting up the agenda. We typically finalize it towards the end of the day Wednesday or begin the third, early Thursday. So, what would be your preference?
I prefer to be able to just reach out to you, Brenton, and just say, I would like to add this as discussion on the agenda. Um, and the reason why is because if I have the authority to come here every day and approve the agenda, but then say, wait, I want to add something. I really want to be mindful of my fellow council members' time and allow them to be able to research or do whatever they need to do beforehand to make an educated decision on something. Um, so I would prefer to just be able to come to you and say, I'd like this on the agenda, please. And then it just gets put on. I don't know what you guys feel, but that's how I feel.
Yeah, I think any, I think any council member should be able to add an agenda item to the agenda. So the deadline is Tuesday?
I would say.
End of the year.
I would ask if you're going to do it. We're normally putting, we're putting together attachments Wednesday into Thursday. So if you do know of something, if you let us know by the day Tuesday, that is very helpful. As in, if we do have to deal with the attachments now, if it is a bigger item, I would ask that you give us a little more notice if we, if it's something that we have to get information together for. If it's just a simple discussion of, hey, I want to talk about, you know, like I was going to say, just control.
Yeah.
Okay, that's an easy one. We don't have to have a whole lot, but if it's something more substantial and necessity, give us more time. And that, you know, use your judgment or it's something that we could talk about, we can hash it through together.
Right, I think the standing rule that we've done is to try and have it in later than noon on Wednesday. We want to try and have it Tuesday, but no later than Wednesday. And then after Wednesday at noon, if it, it's got, it almost have to be a legal issue to put it in there because we've got to give people time to review. So unless Lucas has got something that's really hot, otherwise I usually don't let it in, just because of that. Got to be a good one, right, Lucas? Otherwise I'd tell you to wait. So, anyway. Okay.
The noon, sure.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'll just say noon on Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next item I have here is like bringing this up for council for your thoughts. You don't have to take action tonight on it. If you do, great. Um, July third, we have a council meeting on our regular meetings. That'd be Monday, obviously July fourth is Tuesday. Um, and you're saying that's going to be a conflict for some?
Mm-hmm.
Would you like to reschedule that meeting to the week before? If you would, the park board and the Lions have meetings on Monday, twenty-sixth. So we could do, I believe, the twenty-seventh. So, would you like to reschedule that meeting to the twenty-seventh of June?
Or do it Wednesday night? Unless somebody's going to be gone for the week.
Can we just do the twenty-seventh?
The twenty-seventh of June?
Yeah.
I'm going to have, okay.
Look at a calendar.
I know, I'd have to look too.
And you can say the, and I would double, I'm, I'm fairly sure we have prior hall reserved. I believe we do, because we have pretty much every Monday and Tuesday reserved, other than from like the park board, the, the Lions, there's, I believe, are the two, two days of the month that we don't have locked off, so. Twenty-seventh. Probably worked a little easier because I believe some folks may be out of town week before July, and pretty commonly people go, but, but.
I'd say let's check our calendars and make sure nobody else is gone during that time as well. So we need to do.
Do you like me just bring that to you guys the next meeting?
Yeah, but let's put it, let's get an email out to everybody just so they're aware.
And last one here, a phone tag with trips in from Tricor today. Uh, what they indicated to me towards very end of the day today is that they believe they'd be ready to install the cameras within the next week or two. Um, there's one part that you're still missing. They said that part is part that, um, basically provides a video feed from projector to the video. So that's the one part that they're missing still, but they believe they can get everything else installed and then just add that one part in. That comes in. Um, it mainly would be working with the fire, uh, ready jack, just coordinating schedules to make sure it can be done. Or coordinate their schedules to make sure everybody can be in here to make sure it works.
That's going to be, does that change?
Has not changed from the the last agreement that we have. And I, I believe if I remember correctly, I was at not to exceed us, we had last, or, or that agreement that we had. Those are the items.
Okay. Any questions for Brenton? Alright, alright, portfolio reports.
Actually, I do have one question for Brenton, sorry. Uh, resident asked about open positions in the city. They tried to apply for one open position in the city. They were no, they, they, they could not figure out if it was still open or not. So.
Okay.
Is there any open positions right now?
We have one position opens receptions, but it's not posted, it's paused.
That's, that's what they saw, paused, and I didn't know that.
It was paused.
So.
Yeah, it's paused. And we're reviewing applications and then we had, so just a lot of other things going on. So we're focusing on getting other positions. It caused that one.
Good.
Sorry, I'm good.
Alright, so, uh, portfolio reports, uh, you notice these graduate banners are up. Should be fifty-six of them up, I believe. The boys are putting them up today. I don't know if they got them all done or not, though, Brenton, is here?
I haven't.
Okay, anyway, they're going to get up, which is good. And there are fifty-six of them this year, so a few more than last year. Of course, they were concerned that we had enough light poles. So far, we're good, right, Jim? You did a count? Of course, they were concerned that we had enough light poles so far, we're good, right, Jim, you did account?
We had a few more lights.
Yeah, so I said next year we have to put up a few more lights.
Maybe we have to double up.
Yeah, we'll have to see, so along with that, we're gonna do the, uh, annual parade on the twenty-sixth, I believe that's that Friday. Before, of the memorial weekend, they'll start at six P M, and the graduates can be underneath their banners. And we'll come by and honk the horns and wave and wish them well on their next adventure, so. It's been kinda cool, we've been doing it for three years now, we had about sixty cars, that's kinda fun, the kids liked it, like it, so we'll just keep doing that. Um, gonna be meeting with Senator Kramer on Thursday afternoon, to catch up on a few things. And, uh, I'm gonna try and schedule here, not this week, but probably the next week or two, some one-on-ones with you guys, and it's time to do that again, so. That's what I've got on my list, boom, Naomi, what do you got?
I got nothing, I have a meeting scheduled with Jase this week.
Okay.
But. We're just trying to get back in the swing of things since he's been out.
Yeah, Stephanie, what do you got?
Um, I don't have too much, I just, um, was thinking, and I mentioned it a couple of times here tonight. I don't know that we ever formally announced that the meeting packets are available for our, our meeting, so if you go on the website. Um, you, before the meeting, you can download the entire meeting packet, which is every document that we review here, um, at the meeting. So it's a great source of information, uh, it's the first time the city has done it, and we started, uh, in. I think February or March, um, and I just realized now that a formal announcement wasn't made, so just wanted the residents to know that.
Okay, Jeff, what do you got?
Um, I had one resident reach out, uh, this week, asking about the road in front of, uh, Country Acres one. Uh, the front edge road along, kind of, seventeen seems to be some sort of a soft spot in that road, uh, after the process lifted now. Um, they did blade the road, they said the soft spot's still there, so, uh, it'd be something for you guys to look into. Other nap, um, I don't have a lot, we haven't had a meeting for Metta Dog, as they're getting a new, uh. Director, uh, that meeting will start, uh, begin next month, so.
Um.
Kick back in in June, huh?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn. Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Naomi does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.